At this point, it's 7:06 PM and I would like to resume the ZBA hearing on the application for a dimensional variance that's been submitted by John Henderson and his attorney, Bill Martin, with respect to the property at 39 Main Street Stockbridge. Just by way of background, we had a hearing was held last Tuesday and a site inspection was scheduled and the site inspection in fact took place beginning at 6 o'clock today on May 10th, 2021. We were at the property for approximately 35 minutes during the course of that site inspection. Attorney Martin and Mr. Henderson showed us the property, showed us where the property lines, what property line would be for the proposed separation between lot one and lot two. They gave us a history of the property and additional documents were submitted. One document was submitted that I received at approximately 12 noon today. A supplemental application narrative which will be made part of the record. Three pages with a number of exhibits. In addition, we were supplied a two-page document entitled, Marketing History of 39 Main Street Stockbridge, Massachusetts, which was a timeline provided by Mr. Henderson and his attorney. At this point, I'm going to ask Attorney Martin and/or I'm sorry? At this point, I'm going to ask Attorney Martin and/or Mr. Henderson if there's anything that they want to address either items that they want to clarify that were discussed at last week's meeting or issues that were identified or outlined at the site inspection. So I will turn it over and ask Attorney Martin or Mr. Henderson to proceed.
Joe Ben, thank you, Mr. Schuler. I also wanted to point out for the record that I submitted a replacement page nine to the original submittal. There was a typo in the conclusion paragraph where it said, granting the variance requested will have, and I omitted the word no, so it should read, granted the variance is requested will have no physical impact on the current existing structures and so forth. So that
You received that and thank you. That will also be made part of the record.
Okay. Just to sort of outline the supplemental narrative for you, I tried to address two main points. The first is really the appropriateness or in the requirement of the relief requested. And we've talked about this a variety of times. The nature of the subdivision regulation that allows this type of property to be divided with a subdivision plan that's not a that's not a true subdivision plan requiring approval creates a lot of confusion because the creation of the subdivision plan itself does not make the lots legal lots in the sense that they're legal from the point of view of the subdivision regulation, but they are not from the point of view of the zoning bylaw. And so as we've discussed, it's really a two-part process. I think in the last hearing, Mr. Schuler questioned a bit, you know, the interpretation of the Smalley case in terms of sort of allowing this as the procedure. I can tell you I've looked high and low and cannot find a single case, a reported case that addresses this issue. And honestly, I think that's because cases don't make it there. I was able to find two specific examples from the town of Adams and anecdotally can tell you that there are other cases in Adams where they didn't realize that there was a two-step process. So there are two other properties I became aware of where they recorded the subdivision plan. Properties were sold in separate ownership, thereby in fact creating zoning violations that were ultimately cured because nobody did anything about it. And the zoning violations became cured by virtue of the statute of limitations. The two cases that I point out, one by sheer coincidence was decided by the Adams Board within the last couple of weeks. They don't even have their written decision out yet. But that allowed a church building to be separated from a parsonage building. An earlier case dealt with a larger commercial property where the owners wanted to split off one of the commercial buildings. And I think it was sort of instructive to look at in that application and decision how they dealt with the issue of hardship. And quite honestly, they dealt with it fairly cursory way. And in a way that I think to a large extent makes sense that I hadn't even really thought about, which is, and if you just jump to the second point of my memo, the hardship argument, just the mere fact that you end up, I say, being stuck owning two residential properties or two properties on a single lot in and of itself, I think, is a hardship which is worthy of being corrected. And remember, this circumstance only occurs by, you know, the twist of fate as to when the zoning bylaw got adopted. It isn't anything that the owner asked for or sought. It just simply is because the way the zoning, the time the zoning bylaw was adopted, the properties were frozen in time. And with respect to Mr. Henderson in particular, now this is a property that goes back in his family to a date predating the zoning bylaw. And I think that, well, not on the record at the site visit, maybe he can elaborate when I'm done a little bit more, you know, as his parents became older and he and his family tried to figure out how to dispose of this property, I think since around 2010 and forward, they've essentially discovered that they just simply haven't been able to because the property is really frozen in this state of limbo where you have these two buildings that are joined together and at least until now or until this decision is rendered, simply can't be sold separately. And that has created a hardship. And, you know, that hardship is economic and I look at that in two different ways. One thing that I hadn't realized until just a few moments ago is that I do a lot of business with Victoria Ross, who now has a new married name that escapes me. But she's at Stonehouse and I do a fair amount of business with her. I was talking with her about this and she was kind enough to send me a note, really just confirming from a professional point of view, my experience as a real estate attorney, which is, you know, to buy and sell properties, it's all about the number of potential buyers. And when you're looking at a property like this, which has two buildings, one of which is, you know, a very large structure that requires a lot of maintenance and is in a lot of ways very much different than the cottage house. You really cut down the world of buyers that may be interested. And you also eliminate, really, I think, the most important buyers, which are buyers who would be owner occupied. You know, quite honestly, one of the things that I think any town likes to have is owner occupied properties that have rental units. There is nothing better for a rental unit than having an owner live in one of the units. And by its very nature, I think that if this property were allowed to be separated and ultimately sold separately, both in terms of the financing, but also in terms of, you know, quite honestly, the care and maintenance of the house, just generally speaking, properties that are owner occupied tend to be more well-attended to than properties that are not, particularly multifamily properties. It's just the nature of the beast. So we think it's quite a difficulty to try to deal with this property as a single unit. And certainly from an economic point of view, there's a dramatic difference because as noted in the email I got back from Mike Barbary at the Pittsburgh Cooperative Bank, as a commercial property, you're really, you know, you're trapped. You can only get a five-year fixed rate loan and then it'll adjust. You're limited typically to 70% of loan-to-value ratio with an owner occupied unit. You can typically go 80% and higher. And most importantly, the interest rate on a commercial loan is almost always a percentage or so higher than comparable residential loan. And by the amortization schedules he ran for me, it shows pretty clearly that there's as much as $100,000 difference in terms of what the financing would cost for the same loan amount. So, you know, to address some of the specific questions that we had last week about whether or not this relief can be requested and what the nature of the hardship is, I hope that that memo and some of the supporting documents respond to those questions and certainly are happy to answer questions and have Jack chime in as to his own personal experience that's really outlined in the memo that he submitted.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that have any comments or issues that they want to raise before the ZBA? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the members of the ZBA if they have any specific questions they want to ask Attorney Martin about any of the issues specifically that he's raised in this presentation or any of the issues that were raised at last week's meeting or anything that came up or that has been thought of at the site inspection. John?
Yeah. The information that has been provided was exactly what I thought we needed. And it has convinced me that there is a basis for saying that there is a substantial hardship. And so I appreciate the work that went into it and the precise nature of the information.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, John, or anything you want to raise with Attorney Martin?
No.
Jim Murray?
No. I think the questions that I had had are addressed in the hardship part of the memo.
Are there any questions or any issues you want to raise at this point, Jim, about any of the other components of the test for the variance?
Now, at this point, Tom, do we usually go through before the actual vote to get people's, the board's, you know, comments and where they stand on issues?
What I want to do, Jim, is I want to see if you have any questions of the at that point, after that happens, I'm going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, permit the board to deliberate and discuss some of the issues presented. But at this point, I'm requesting or asking members of the board if they have any questions from Mr. Martin or the applicant. Please raise them or any comments. Not hearing any more from you, Jim. Buck Smith, do you have any questions with Attorney Martin or Mr. Henderson?
No, I don't. I just like to commend Attorney Martin on the thoroughness of the application and even the follow-up today. I found those two examples in Adams to be instructive. So I really appreciate the thoroughness with which you presented this.
Thank you.
And I don't have any other further questions.
Miles Moffett, do you have any questions of Mr. Martin?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Not to shoot myself in the foot, but there was one other issue that I would raise before the public hearing closing. That is, somebody asked me a couple of times about the easement that will have to be granted by the front parcel to the back parcel, which is a sure thing. And I don't remember offhand whether a variance can have conditions like a special permit. But I can certainly assure you that whether included in the order or not, there will no doubt have to be an easement granted that mirrors the easement from the neighbor, from Austin Riggs, to give the back property access by way of a recorded easement. So whether or not that has to be part of your decision process or not, rest assured it will be part of any comment.
Thank you for that clarification. I guess I'm curious, and I did, Mr. Martin, I did read the information you provided as with respect to the church and parsonage issue for the Adams Center of the Art. I think I sort of understand that and I understand also there's been no real decision. So it's not really clear, at least based on my, albeit somewhat cursory reading of what was in Exhibit A. But there doesn't appear to be a whole lot of discussion, just details as the actual basis for that church parsonage building decision. Is that correct or am I missing something?
Well, the decision hasn't been rendered yet, but I did talk to Brian from Beck Architects, who's the person who did this. And, you know, as I said, one of the things that's sort of happened is that, and even if you look in his application, you know, the issue of what they consider to be hardship is really pared down to the simple fact that the two buildings are stuck on one lot. They don't even really ask in Adams that the applicant go any further than that analysis. I do know from following this in the news media that they're proposing some sort of arts facility in the old church and have no need for the parsonage building. And I think are planning on severing it off and selling it to just raise some capital. And of course, it's a similar situation where the two buildings were built on one parcel. And so they just created a property line that made the most sense, kind of working its way down the side of the church building.
Similarly, with respect to the PCA systems case, it didn't really appear that there was a whole lot of detail provided by the committee. It just basically indicated they borrowed unanimously the command of variance. And there's sort of a conclusive finding that it would not impose any detrimental impact to the surrounding properties. They were satisfied with responses, the applicant's responses to questions about the criteria, but they don't really outline the basis for that decision. Is there any more documentation that you could assume with respect to what the board looked at when they reached that decision other than what we have here in this?
No. I don't want to comment too much on how different boards work, but it is now perfectly clear to me that in Adams anyway, they consider the second part, the zoning analysis, that follows the subdivision endorsement to really be practically ministerial. They view it as because you have a byright entitlement under the subdivision bylaw to separate the lots, that the corollary of that is that you ought to have, for all practical purposes, a byright ability for zoning relief. And it seems as though that zoning relief will be granted absent any, you know, very vocal neighborhood opposition. That just, that seems very clear to me, the approach that Adams has now taken. And there really isn't much more to it than that. If you look at the older parcel, this was a fairly large commercial property with a bunch of buildings on it. And there was one large building kind of on the corner of the lot that just made sense to sever off and sell separately.
Okay. I don't think I have any other questions. Anything else? Any board members want to raise or discuss? Or ask for comment from Attorney Martin or Mr. Henderson? Patty, are you with us? Patty?
Yes, I'm here. Yes.
Do you have anything you want to ask Attorney Martin with respect to the issues that we've just discussed or what we learned at the site inspection?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing in order to permit the ZBA members to discuss and deliberate on the issues presented. Can I have to close the public hearing?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The ayes have it. At this point, the public hearing is closed and I would now like to proceed to the next phase, which would be where the ZBA members can discuss and deliberate and review the issues presented. And I guess maybe what we'll do again is we'll start with Mr. Heisen.
Yeah. Mr. Martin's description of the views of the Adams zoning hearing board, I think, are inappropriate but kind of irrelevant. I mean, obviously, we're not guided by the views of what the Adams ZBA may think. I think that there has to be an independent determination of whether the requirements of a variance have been met. In the last meeting, I had concerns about undue substantial hardship and asked for more information. And as I said before, that information was well-provided. And at this point, I feel all the requirements for getting the variance requested have been met.
Jim Murray, do you have any, anything you wish to discuss?
Yeah, I think, you know, I came into this being very skeptical that something like this, you know, could rationally be approved. But in looking at it, everything that we're addressing has existed for years. And the only difference is that Jack is now the property owner and he has not brought any of these issues upon the property. He has not expanded or gotten closer to property lines. And the fact that the planning board, you know, has, you know, had, you know, approved this previously, I think, you know, justifies, you know, looking at this as creating a hardship, which I think was the, you know, the key issue, you know, of the conditions for the variance.
Buck Smith?
I concur with all that's just been said. I would only add that I can't, trying to figure any kind of detriment to the public good. I don't see any. I don't see that the granting of this will derogate from the intent and it won't have any impact. I mean, nothing's changed. The only thing that's changing is the possibility of two owners as opposed to one, which actually may be an advantage. But I don't have any any other comments. You know, as I said before, I think, well, as was said earlier, I think the hardship has been very clearly demonstrated. So I see no problem in the granting of the variance.
Patty, do you have any thoughts with respect to the issues that have been raised here by this application for variance?
I don't really, I don't see any difference that it's going to impact really anything as I think it was Buck Smith that just said exactly the same thing. There's nothing really different other than two different owners. So I don't see why not.
Okay. Well, at this point, I think I'll make a few observations if I may. What we have here is basically a request for variance with respect to lot one, which would include the 6,000 square foot house for frontage and for a side yard. So there are two separate requests for variances with respect to lot one. With respect to lot two, you're looking at a variance request for the square footage, a variance request for the frontage and a variance request for the side yard. When I look at the criteria that we have to examine in order to grant a variance a number of requirements, and the first one I'll look at is the conditions unique to the property. And the argument's been made that this, that what's the unique condition of the property is that you have two residential structures in a existing lot and this is unique because it predates the zoning. I guess I take a different tack than the rest of the board that have spoken with respect to that because I think that that criterion, when you talk about, I think, relates more to soil conditions and the like and not to the fact that you have a pre-existing non-conforming use, a use that's protected and a use that can continue in the same situation as it's been since 1975 and it can stay like this forever. So I do have some issues with respect to the first criteria. The second criteria is the lack of effect on the zoning district. And the representation has been made, and I certainly think that the applicant is credible and I've known him for a number of years and I understand exactly what he, I believe him when he tells me that as long as he owns the property, it's going to remain in the condition that he sent. That is, there's going to be presumably a couple of apartments in the front building, the big building, and he'll continue to live in the back lot, the building in lot two. And that's fine. But the problem, I guess, I have is we don't really know what will happen when and if Mr. Henderson at some point decides to sell the property or if he passes on and we don't know what his heirs intend to do with it. And at that point, we really won't have any control over what use will be put to property on lot one and the property in lot two. It's commercially zoned, it's in a prominent section of the town, right there on Main Street. So I do think there may be some impact on the zoning district. With respect to hardship, I must confess, I think that I view hardship and I view the arguments that have been advanced initially with some skepticism. And my skepticism frankly has been worn down by the effective advocacy of Mr. Martin and the efforts he has made to detail the differential financial impact that Mr. Henderson would have with respect to financing using, in the commercial loan context as opposed to residential. I want to commend Attorney Martin for his zealous efforts on the issue of hardship. But I must reluctantly conclude, I'm not persuaded by that because I don't think that if you look at the case law and if you look at how hardship is treated in the case law, financial hardship is not sufficient. The fact that someone has to ensure and own two separate residences, which is the situation we have here, is a choice that is made by the applicant, just like it would be a choice made by whoever would purchase this property from the applicant. I'm not convinced that the financial hardship associated with the financing is particularly compelling. While I applaud Mr. Martin for his efforts and I understand that the argument, we do have a circumstance here where the applicant does have three apartments for which he's receiving rent, which would be a commercial activity. And like anything else, if you have a commercial activity, there are certainly certain prices associated with that. So for one to make the argument on one hand that this is a hardship because I have to seek a certain type of commercial financing, yet on the other hand, you're receiving rents for these various units. I guess I find that inconsistency something that I look at when I say that I don't know if the argument with respect to hardship is particularly compelling. The final standard for which we have to look at a zoning variance is whether it's consistent with the intent and purposes of the bylaws. As I outlined before, you're looking for two separate variances with respect to lot one, three separate variances with respect to lot two. Our bylaws set forth specific frontage, side yard and square footage requirements. And the reason that these are here and the reason they were enacted is to act in a manner consistent with Section 1.3, preventing the overcrowding of land, minimizing adverse effects of development minimizing adverse effects of development on the town and impacting it so that it doesn't undermine the, well. The point being that I, I think that the bylaws have specific, perform a specific function here. And I think we have to look very carefully at, and look long and hard as to whether we want to deviate from that in this kind of a situation. I think that to grant a variance to permit two separate non-conforming lots is not, in fact, consistent with the intent and purposes of zoning bylaws, which are to protect and to enhance the town's existing small-town character. And I think that for those reasons, I'm reluctantly, and I say reluctantly because I've known Mr. Henderson and his family for over 40 years, and I have the utmost respect for him and the comments and advocacy from his very capable lawyer, Mr. Martin, I still reluctantly conclude that I would vote to deny the, that the application for variance from the dimensional requirements. Miles, you have any comments or anything, Mr. Martin?
Tom, I just have a couple of questions for you regarding what you've just said. The, the variance would be granted only for the property, not for the use. So the, I, the, you know, future uses for either those buildings that would vary from existing ones, I would have to, I, I, you know, pass the muster of the existing use restrictions. And I believe that the variance that we're looking at is actually a dimensional one that has to do with frontage and setbacks. And, you know, in my mind, those non-conforming situations already exist and, you know, cannot be changed. So that would be the only concern that I have, you know, with your, your argument.
Well, I, I take your point, and I see, I guess the way that I look at it, Jim, is when I look at the criteria and then they out, and specific requirements that I think have to, have to be met. With respect to an existing use restriction, I'm not sure exactly how that would frankly work out in terms of, you know, what would happen, say, when Mr. Mark, when, if, if and when Mr. Henderson either passed away and his heirs took to sell the property, or whether in fact limitations could be, some zoning enforcement effort could be made to, to address that issue. I just don't know enough about how that would work. And as a result, I think I've sort of taken the tact I have, that is, does, does the zoning, does this request for a variance satisfy the standards outlined by our courts? And that's how I looked at it. The point about an existing use restriction, I think, is a valid one. But I, I guess I've taken a little different tack with respect to that issue because I'm not sure how that would play out.
Right, okay. I appreciate that. I was just trying to get all your read on it. So, thank you.
I do have a question. So during our site visit today, they had said that the land court had accepted this. So therefore, the town had taxed it separately for the two separate buildings, basically, as two separate lots. So how does this decision of the zoning board of appeals, how does it, how does it affect each other that land court has accepted that? Tom?
Well, the way that I interpret this is the fact that the town decided, for whatever reason, to make this into two separate lots based on what the planning board did really has no bearing as to whether or not it meets and passes muster with respect to the zoning, zoning bylaws and regulations. I think you're talking apples and oranges. With respect to the, the fact that they, that this was filed in the land court in Berkshire County, I don't know what the operative effect is. The point, my, the way that I look at this, Patty, the, the fact that, and I think one of the things that we did learn in the, in the initial hearing, and what we learned through the Smalley case is that essentially this subdivision approval is almost a pro forma requirement. There's no real discretion on the part of the planning board to say yea or nay. It's almost like a ministerial task. And the real, and it doesn't really have any impact as to whether or not this is a legit, a lot, a saleable piece of property. And it has no relevance as to, because it still has to pass muster under the zoning regulations and zoning bylaws, which is, if you recall, Mr. Martin saying, look, they've done this. And in the Smalley case, it basically says that's a necessary first step before you can procure approval from whatever board hears or addresses application for variance. So that's how I look at it.
Yes.
Miles is breaking up a little bit.
Yeah, we can't hear.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my, my thoughts on some of this was to go along with Patty's question. If the variances came before, if the request came before the board with the property as it is now with two lots, and let's say variances were granted, and as two lots, as, as a combined complete lot, the variance would be, I guess, fronted, side yard, and maybe square footage as well, I'm not sure, I haven't done the calculations. But then if they went to the planning board later and became two lots, and the application to divide the lot into two were granted, but they again need to go back to the ZBA for a variance request on each individual lot. I don't know, Patty, yes?
That's, that's exactly, yeah, right, yes.
It seems like, like Mr. Martin pointed out, the first step is to, is to read the subdivision, and then you decide, you know, what variances are required and make, like, like you can done now.
I, I guess from my perspective, I think the procedure, the procedure that was laid out by Smalley and outlined by Mr. Martin pretty specifically, I think is the proper procedure, and I think that's what we follow here.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any other, any, any other members of the board have any comments or questions or items that they want to raise as part of our board deliberation?
Yeah, so I, I guess I have a question. I'm not quite sure how, because I'm not a lawyer, how Smalley impacts the decision that you have before you today. And the decision that you have before you today changes absolutely nothing with the character, with the town. I, I, I just don't see what the, and Tom, I'm sorry, I just don't understand what your objection to it is.
Well, it's kind of an awkward situation here because basically we sort of opposed the hearing. I guess what I'll try to do is kind of outline the basis for my decision, my opinion. One, with respect to the whole issue of Smalley, I think Attorney Martin has explained that in this circumstance, in 2015, our, our town planning granted a subdivision to grant it, to slice this into two lots. And that the next step would be, as was outlined in Smalley, that would be a necessary predicate, the first step, the next step, which would be to go before the appropriate board to seek a variance from the zoning requirements and zoning bylaws, which is in fact what you and your attorney have done. Now, with respect to the, my, my conclusion as to the effect on the zoning regulations, on the question of hardship, on the question of the, whether it's consistent with the intent and purpose of the bylaw, I think those are, I think, factual determinations that we as ZBA members make within the confines of the evidence that's presented, our understanding of the, of the intent of, of the zoning bylaws, and our reading of the evidence that we, that we've heard here from the applicant and issues raised by other board members. So, I mean, I, I don't know what, how else to say except that that's, as, as a member of the, the board, it's my responsibility to look at the standards that are outlined or required by the Mass General laws for granting a variance, and try to go through each of the components and say, does the applicant meet this component? If so, yes. If not, why not? If so, how did he do it or how didn't he do it? And that's sort of what I've attempted to do.
I, I know the public hearing's closed, but just by way of perhaps a point of clarification, I think there's a distinction when you're sitting on a board between deciding that you can't do something because the statute of the bylaw or whatever doesn't permit it versus you're not persuaded that a particular condition is satisfied as a matter of fact. And if I'm, if I'm hearing Mr. Schuler correctly, I, I think he's acknowledging, and correct me if I'm wrong, that, that other board members' views in terms of whether these conditions are met are within their judgment as to whether they're met or not. It's just a matter of whether individual board members are persuaded or not versus whether or not we're asking for the right thing in the right fashion. I think we, we've established, I hope we've established that. And again, one of the things I do want to point out is that Jack used the phrase "land court" when he was referring to recording at the registry of deeds. The land court is, is actually a court that may decide things. That's not what I think Jack was talking about. He was talking about actually bringing the plan to the registry of deeds to be recorded. And I also think that the town made a mistake, just an administrative mistake, because the recording of the plan should not in and of itself have created two separate tax parcels. It should have been, you shouldn't have been able to do that without there being a recorded deed. So I think that that happened, and it was undone, but it was sort of irrelevant because it was a mistake. My, my main point is that, you know, I, and again, I don't, I'm not, I'm not asking to reopen the public hearing or debate the point, but I take it that, that Mr. Schuler is just simply not persuaded that we've met our burden of, you know, our burden on the, on the subsidiary findings that the board has to make. Not that the board can't grant the relief requested, just that he doesn't think that we have made the requisite showing. Is that?
So, I am, I am one vote.
Yeah.
And that you couldn't be more correct, Mr. Martin. What the board, what individual, individual board members evaluate the information presented by the applicant is up to them. And when I speak, I am speaking as a fact finder, member of the board. The only difference between me and the rest of the members of the board is that I'm running the, and I say running in a very generic sense, the, the meeting. But my vote is one vote, no different than anyone else's. And, you know, what this was, in this deliberative process, was a chance for each of the board members to discuss and the, the information presented and the issues presented. So I couldn't agree more. I am speaking as an individual, and I'm speaking as an individual who has concluded as a matter of fact that the applicant has not met their burden with respect to the various prongs required for granting a variance. That's not to say that others have different, may reach different conclusions. That's, that's, I want to make that very clear. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. I'm speaking on behalf of a member of the board myself. Thank you.
I just, just because we've been talking about Tom's comments for the last several minutes, I just want to say that I, I, I want to stand by what I said before. I, I do feel that the, the requirements of the bylaw have been met. This is a very difficult property. I mean, who's, who's the culprit here? So I, I, it is, it's a very difficult property. And as has been said before, you know, the, the, the dimensional requirements are not changing. Nothing's changing. The only thing we're talking about is the ability to sell two properties or have two ownerships and potentially sell separate properties. If we deny this, it, it, it really, it is a hardship. I mean, not only financial, but I mean, just how, how you would own a property like this. What would you do with this property? I mean, the only thing that pops to my mind is you could condominiumize it. And that, and enters a whole other, whole other set of discussion to be had. And I don't want to go there, but it is a difficult property. There is a hardship. There, the dimensional changes are none. So I, I stand by what I said before.
Do any other members of the board have any comments or questions about any of the items discussed?
I, I would just say that with respect to Tom's comments, this is an unusual situation, and at one part of Tom's comment, comments, I think you said that the usual situation for there being a basis or a hardship is often some physical aspect of the property, ledge, drainage, that kind of thing. But that even though that's the common situation, there's nothing, I believe, in the language of our variance bylaws or in the state variance provisions that limit the concept of hardship to some kind of physical aspect of the property. I, I think it, it's an unusual case. And as I said earlier in the first time, is that simply because a property would be worth more if the variance were granted is not a basis for granting a variance. But there seems to me that there's a line there, and no one can put a quantity on it as to what is insubstantial and what is substantial. I happen to think for the reasons that have been presented today, most recently by Mr. Martin and by the applicant, that that line has been crossed. But I understand how Tom would feel differently.
Well, again, it becomes ultimately a, how one examines the facts. Do we have, do any other board members have any other comments? Because at this point, hearing, well, let me ask if there's any additional comments.
I just have one. I'm just trying to understand this financial hardship part of it. I kept hearing that financing was difficult because it was even, it was more commercial than it was residential because there are several different units there. And then selling it was because it was such a giant house and, you know, another large home in the back also, or units, whatever they are, that people were afraid to get into it. And then I heard from Martin, Attorney Martin, that he had consulted with Victoria Ross, who is actually my colleague at Stonehouse Properties, who's excellent. And he had said that, you know, it was, it might be a difficult sell if I, if I understood that correctly. understood that correctly. My opinion with that was, I kind of disagree with that, especially being in the middle of Stockbridge. And I did hear Tom say, well, what about the future of, because it is commercial, this property, and it is complicated, how are we going to maintain the integrity of Stockbridge? You know, what is going to happen? Could it be a commercial thing? Could it be something that's not, not in line with what Stockbridge has been and intend to be? Just my thoughts. Kind of, just, this is my first time, so kind of back and forth with us, but the actual part of it also.
Could I, could I comment on that? And that is that at some point, someone said, and I hope that Jack will forgive us for thinking about how life might be if you're no longer with us, right? And there's some subsequent owner of the property. And basically, if it's, whatever the zoning is, and I haven't looked at all the specifics of the zoning for that site, but if it happened that under the zoning, there could be something other than a number of apartments, some kind of commercial use that we consider to be undesirable, my response is, that's not our concern. But that's the concern of the select board and the town meeting as to the zoning. That would be a whatever is done in the future has to be consistent with the zoning. And if that zoning is something that we don't like, all I can say is, so what? It's not for us to say.
Good point.
I guess my only comment there was, it also has to be consistent with the purpose of the bylaw. I reached the conclusion that I thought that this, this application for a variance would not be consistent with the purpose of the bylaws for the reasons I've decided before, but I take your point there.
Can I say something?
Again, it's been closed for public hearing, but I certainly
If you permit this variance, you create two residential lots as opposed to a commercial lot. So if you want to see this land redeveloped as a commercial lot, a Holiday Inn, a McDonald's, whatever, then vote against it. If you want to see it stay what it is, which is a gem of Stockbridge, a centerpiece of Stockbridge, vote for the variance. That's my statement.
Can I just, can I just clarify one thing? This is not a commercial zone. This is a residential central. It's two different.
Commercially, it's commercially zoned.
Not according to the application. I don't have a map here, but.
I think it's RC. I also think we're off track, quite honestly. Because I think the, the use is not at all the issue of this application and any change of use would either be a change of a prior non-conforming use or would have to conform to the then current zoning. So, you know, again, the public hearing's over, but I think we're off on a tangent that's not terribly helpful.
I just want to correct, you know, the comments that we're talking about using this property as a commercial property. That's not permitted in the residential center.
Believe me, I tried to do permitting here, there, and elsewhere. Getting a McDonald's or a Holiday Inn there is going to be really tough.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I, I, I'm just saying that, all I'm saying is that what we're proposing solidifies what the use is the way it is today.
Right.
Any other questions or comments from any members of the board? Hearing done, at this point, I'm going to ask the ZBA board to vote on the applicant John H. Henderson's request for variances from the bylaw, zoning bylaw requirements with respect to dimensional variances under section 7.2.2 to permit separate ownership of two residential properties which currently exist at 39 Main Street. And I'm going to suggest, and my understanding under the rules is that for this variance to pass, four out of the five members of the ZBA, or the five, four out of the five voting members of the ZBA, in order for this to pass, have to vote yes. I'll start with Buck Smith. How do you vote on?
In favor of granting the variance.
For the reasons that you outlined in our earlier discussion, sir?
Yes.
How do you vote, John Heisen?
I'd vote to grant the variance for the reasons I've stated.
James Murray, how do you vote with respect to the variance application?
I vote to grant the variance. I think the, it's a dimensional issue that has to do with existing conditions. And I agree that there is no, the issue of ownership of future sale or future use of the property are not part of this variance.
Miles Loffin, how do you vote?
I vote to accept the application for the variance. Can you hear me? I, primarily along the lines of what Tim Murray just explained, that there's dimensional issues that exist and the properties existed as is before the bylaws came into effect. And I'm okay with that.
And I, Thomas Schuler, vote to deny the application for the variance for the reasons I outlined during our discussion. That being said, the application for Mr. Henderson's variance from the zoning bylaw requirements has been granted by the ZBA by a vote of four to one. We have fourteen days in which to prepare or process the paperwork with the town. So that should hopefully be available for recording at the Versure Registry of Deeds within the next week, within the fourteen days. At this point, I want to thank everybody for the time and attention they give into what I think has been a very difficult case from my perspective, from a personal and somewhat analytical perspective as well. And I also want to commend Attorney Martin for his zealous and effective advocacy on behalf of Mr. Henderson.
We'll be back for with a McDonald's or a Holiday Inn, I can guarantee it.
Well, thank you very much. On that note, the hearing is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.